Angela.
It's Holly's music. It's Holly, like she's getting ready to get up here and do her spiel. Okay. It's mine, I turn it off. When I was looking at the agenda, um, yesterday, it had boxes around that agenda.
It did.
Right now it doesn't. But it did yesterday.
Good evening and welcome to the Kingsburg City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February second, twenty twenty-two. Um, tonight, our invocation is going to be given by Pastor Clayton Paul from Hope, Kingsburg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can stand with me, please. Welcome Pastor.
All right, let's uh, let's take a minute and we'll pray. Um, God, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, uh, to lead. God, thank you for the opportunity that you've, uh, brought all these people, um, to care for, to guide, to direct, uh, the affairs of this city. God, I pray that you give them lots of wisdom. God, I pray you give them, uh, just an abundance of discernment as they, as they discuss, as they work together, as they plan, um, to, uh, lead in the, uh, in the continued flourishing of this city. Um, God, we, we ask that you would bless this time, that it would be, um, a time of, uh, just of, of really growth, movement, um, God, for your glory. We pray this in your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, um, can you please do roll call?
Here.
House Member Palomar?
Here.
House Member Roman?
Here.
Here, thank you. Item number two is to approve the agenda.
I will make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, under Presentations, we have none tonight, so we will move on to item number four, which is Public Comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anyone in chambers that would like to come up? Okay, we'll start at the back and then we'll move to the next row. So if you'd like to come up first? Okay, come on up. Thank you. So state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg, please.
My name is Mark Medley. Um, I just bought twenty-six, twenty-three, twelfth Avenue here in town. And, um, just recently, the code enforcement came around and had a discrepancy with the height of our fence along the alleyway. And, um, for me, my fence has two main purposes, security and privacy. And due to the fact that the level of the alleyway is significantly lower than the actual foundation of the house with the seven-foot city ordinance, we can actually see directly into the, the living room of the, the tenants behind us. And, uh, what I would actually really like to do is be, make a retaining wall to bring my, um, yard up to level, so that way my kids can have more area to play and then also do a seven-foot fence from there up. So I brought some pictures of my backyard and you can actually see along the property line between me and my neighbor, it significantly slopes down. And we did make the corrections for the code enforcement, but, um, my plan is in the near future to wanting to do a retaining wall and put a seven-foot fence. So I want to be able to get that permitted through the city.
Okay. So when we have public comment, because it's not something on agenda, we're hearing what you're saying, but we're not allowed to respond to your request?
Okay.
What we can do is we can direct staff to get your contact information and to get in contact with you about that.
Okay, that sounds great.
So, um...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yes, you can have them. And one thing too that I've noticed is-
City Manager Alexander Henderson's here too.
Cause I know, like, you know, um, properties that have been, you know, twenty years ago, they don't have this issue. But it's the newer, you know, last fifteen years and even some of the new, uh, like here on Academy going towards CAM, those properties, they're higher elevation and they're the same issue as well. So... So then who would I pass my, uh, number on to?
If you just wanna give me a call or shoot me an email, we'll set up a time and we can...
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Lewis. Uh, uh, do I say my address?
You can just say a resident.
I'm a resident in Kingsburg. Um, I did want to clarify real quick, he is my neighbor. Um, he's not talking about a fifteen-foot fence, he's talking about a total of nine feet. Um, just, I just wanted to clarify that. I know people tend to get a little carried away. Um, so I'm, I'm actually here for the same reason. I, I have a little bit more of a discrepancy though, um, and a little bit more of a frustration that I'll, I'll try to, um, make as clear as I can. Um, but I do want to point out to the board that I'm not anti-ordinance. I, I, uh, being a law enforcement officer myself, I believe that it's very important to keep this town how it is. Um, I'm not asking for this ordinance to go away, I'm asking that maybe it's, it's a little outdated, um, given the fact that these new houses, the foundation of the house are going higher to protect the water runoff. I used to live on the south side of, um, this, uh, city, there's, that's not an issue. Um, but as you move more north, the foundations of these houses are higher and the fences are lower. Um, and that's kind of where I think that he was, that the direction that he was going into. But however, um, I did want to talk about my specific issue. Um, the, my, if I stand in my backyard, it raised, it measures seven feet, two inches. Anybody that would like to come to my house, I would invite them, um, uh, if, if, if need be. It raises seven feet, two inches. If I stand in the alleyway and raise, and do my fence, it stands eight feet, three inches. And this is because my foundation and the alleyway is a lot significantly lower than my house. So there, so I, I just want to give you kind of a visual. If my wife gets out of the shower in our bedroom and forgets to shut the, the, the blinds, my neighbor can sit in his living room watching TV and watch my wife get out of the shower, okay? I have no expectation of privacy, the law does not protect me in that aspect because I have, the fence is lower than the foundation of my house, right? What I mean by expectation of privacy is it's subjective and objective. Subjective expectation of privacy really means that your opinion of your privacy. So if you're in your car, sitting alone, you're, it's your opinion that you have an expectation of privacy. Objective privacy protects you by law. And again, what I mean by that is if you're in your home, you one hundred percent have objective privacy. So if I'm peeking in your window, watching you do whatever, you have prowler, peeping, trespassing, array of stuff that you could be arrested on. According to the law, the backyard is the same, you have objective privacy, okay? So if I have, if my fence went down to seven feet, which would make me see all my neighbors' backyards, um, and somebody walked by watching my daughter in her bikini in my pool, right? She, I, she has the right to have that e- objective expectation of privacy, but however, if I have to lower my fence and somebody walks by like this and just sits there and watches my daughter, I have no law protecting me. He legally can sit there and watch my daughter bathe in my, or, you know, uh, swim in her pool. So that's, that's why, that's why eight years ago, my fence was built at where it is now. For some reason, it's an issue now. But, um, I do want to point out that the Planning Department, the Code Enforcement, they already know about this issue. That's why today, yesterday, and tomorrow, they're actually already approving nine-foot, three-inch fences. And I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, I actually have pictures and, and everything for that. Um, but I, what I, what I wanted to, um, and I don't mean to get like too personal with my wife getting out of the shower and if they, I just wanted to express that, you know, sometimes, and we're, you know, we're adults here, sometimes the kids are away and my wife would go in the pool topless. That, she's within her rights to do that without thinking that somebody from this living room or this living room is watching her take that shower, right? So...
Just as a reminder, it's five minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Am I almost five minutes or a half? Okay, sorry guys, I tend to, I tend to... Okay, so what I have here is the new housing developments, um, they're, they're at nine feet, three inches. This is being approved by our county, or, uh, city, excuse me, nine feet, three inches. If you go in the backyard of these houses, it's seven foot. The reason for that is the same problem that I'm having, it goes like this. So I actually talked to a couple of contractors that are building the house today and they'll tell you, the reason they do that is because House B does not want to see inside House A. Nobody in their right mind is gonna buy a house when it's, you have that kind of encroachment. So the city is actually approving these right now. So I, I, it baffles me why I'm even here tonight, I, I, I... They, they understand the problem, is what I'm saying. I went into code enforcement five, six, seven different times, I got a notice that says, uh, fence height needs to be seven. They didn't cite an ordinance, I got no information, what happens if I don't, is there an appeal process? I got nothing. I went in there six, seven different times and lo and behold, I found out they don't know the answer. So I went into City Hall and found out that they have, um, an appeal process. Well, thanks for letting the ordinary person know, cause I didn't know. But I also found out, and it's not their expert, expertise, so I would ex- expect them not to know, is they don't even know the appeal process, I'm still waiting for that answer. So that's why I'm here today. So that's why I wanted to present all this to you guys. I think it's a little outdated, given the fact the new construction. Sorry, I tend to ramble.
No, that's okay, um, we'll direct staff to get in contact with you. If you want to get, um, our city manager, Alexander Henderson's business card-
Okay.
Then you can set up a time to talk to him so that they can work on it with you.
Awesome. And then real quick, this is how high my fence is, higher than ordinance. This is what I'm fighting for right now. It's eight foot, three inches. This is why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thanks Jeff.
Do we have anyone else in chambers that would like to do a public comment? Okay, at this time, we will close public comment. And item five is, um, Consent Calendar. These are items that are routine in nature and are placed on the Consent Calendar. They're considered one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the Consent Calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the Consent Calendar, um, includes recitals, reading ordinance titles, and adoptions, recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, I have five point one, five point two, five point three, and five point four. Does anyone on council wish to have any of these pulled? No? Okay, then I will make a motion.
I motion to approve Consent Calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, Regular Calendar, six point one, Community Development Update Presentation. And, um, it, presentation and sponsor is from our Community Development Director, Holly Owen.
Thank you Mayor North and City Council, can everyone hear me here? I'm just gonna lean a little bit into the microphone. Um, what we have up for you tonight, uh, well, you have three items from me tonight, but the first item, um, has to do with the, just an update from, from my department, um, for the last quarter of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we're going to try to get on a regular schedule where we bring to you, um, summaries of projects and, and the kind of actions that we're taking, uh, uh, on a regular basis, hopefully every quarter. Um, so what you have, um, here is just a, really a summary, a progress report of, of what has, uh, occurred in this department, uh, since my arrival, really in September, um, twentieth, uh, and they, I just want to highlight, um, first of all, really how busy we've, we've been, um, especially with, uh, maintaining the same staff, staffing levels, uh, and we've done, I think, a really good job of, of, of providing a consistent service to the community and to, uh, applicants. And we are certainly committed to doing, uh, doing that in the future. One of the, uh, one of the items I really concentrated on my first, uh, quarter was just an improvement on, uh, a focus on process. Uh, it seemed to me that, uh, although we, we did a pretty good job when things were a little slower, we needed to be a little more organized in terms of tracking projects. So we started a project tracker that, uh, that just, an internal document really, but it really helps us figure out where, where, uh, actions are in the pipeline. Sometimes that's just, well, who, uh, whose plans are in Plan Check, you know, what, what do we need from the applicant? And some of those, uh, in, include, uh, actions for just ge- some gentle reminders or, or check-ins with applicants to make sure that, that we, uh, we know, that they know, that, you know, we're either waiting for a response on them or that there's, there's been, you know, some issue that they need to consider before we can move forward with our project. So I'll, I'll, it's my, uh, uh, desire that they have a lot more ability to ask questions of us about the process and then that we can respond in a timely fashion. Um, we also are looking at GIS, uh, re- reinstating GIS capabilities. Um, increasingly in, in our society, we're a visual society, we, we, uh, express, uh, concepts and, through maps and, uh, through, uh, through visual diagrams. And we had the GIS capabilities, uh, until Mary Colby retired. And then when she retired, we, we lost that and we're in, in the process of reinstating that. We've, uh, purchased some software as well as, as hardware. Some of that will be shared with, uh, uh, the fire department because they also have in needs, uh, in, they're in need of mapping and data, uh, to find out where their calls or services are, uh, and, and, uh, issues of that nature. Uh, as we move into the, uh, the housing element, we're gonna need to be able to map, uh, density potentials in the city. We need to keep our maps updated, we have addressing requirements that are ongoing as we build subdivisions. So it'll be a welcome, uh, a welcome change to have that come back into, into the city of Kingsburg and we're pretty fortunate to have that in-house. Uh, in other cities, they contract that out, uh, to other services and we, you know, just way we, we control some of that and we can actually make maps that are useful through our own departments and, uh, perhaps also with, with applicants who may need them. Uh, so, um, that's one thing that we're moving forward definitely with that. Uh, we have a number, number of current projects in the pipeline, you can see that on page four of, of this, uh, report. Um, and some of those, by the time I come back with you, uh, in another quarter, some of these will drop off, others will get added. Uh, we're, we're very busy with the T-Mobile Call Center, I think you have fairly regular updates on what that, uh, what that entails. They, um, there are still, you know, committed to, uh, a March thirty-first opening and that, that requires us to be quite responsive at all times. Uh, we have, um, page six to eight, uh, then page five to six, there's summaries of activities and accomplishments of building in, uh, code compliance, uh, divisions. Um, there are some performance measures and some graphs that you can see, um, on page six to eight, um, which really reflects a couple of things. You see that we're, we've been busy, um, despite COVID, during COVID, uh, despite, uh, supply chain shortages and, and, uh, costs. I think perhaps what is being reflected here too is, uh, some, um, financing activity that, that was, uh, driven by low interest rates. And so you see people jumping on projects even though the cost, uh, even though, even through labor shortages and even through the, the cost of, of materials, uh, they, they feel the, uh, the desire and the, and the, uh, need financially just to go forward with projects, so you'll see some of that. The revenue from the permitting process is going to be higher just naturally because there were greater numbers of permits. Um, a lot of that would, would, is reflected in, in, uh, greater activity in the city, but some of that also was, um, uh, an, an ability for full-time staff to recognize when people have done work without permits and then requesting that that, you know, that, that that be corrected. So, so that would account for some of the, the gain in, uh, in our permitting, uh, activity. Uh, you also see, uh, some code enforcement, um, activity, code compliance activity, I should say, uh, in some of the, the photos that were in the, in the, uh, report. Uh, on page twelve and thirteen, you'll see, uh, a breakdown of, uh, some of the, um, uh, the code responsibilities. It's not all City Hall, uh, sometimes it's a Public Works responsibility to respond to, oh, alley maintenance or, uh, park maintenance, street light repair. So if you're curious about who, which department would be in charge of that, on page twelve and thirteen, you'll see, uh, how that is broken down. Uh, that concludes my presentation for this quarter. I look forward to keeping you updated every quarter as we go through twenty twenty-two. Uh, I'm available to answer any questions at this point and, uh, thanks for your attention.
Possible discussion? I do have a question because, um, enforcement was on there. So when enforcement is done, um, is there any more information we can give them other than just that tag with, like, an X that gives them directions on what they can do? Or like specifically what the appeal process is? Cause it sounds like we've had people coming in and weren't, it doesn't sound like, I don't know if it's new staff, they're not clear on the appeal process. Something that can be given to that citizen when they are cited on their property that's a little more clear?
That's a, I think that's a, that's an excellent idea, certainly a, a good reminder when a citizen comes to the microphone and lets you know at the beginning of the meeting that that's one of their concerns. Uh, we, we do have an appeal process, uh, we don't use it very often, to be, to be honest with you, we haven't had, um, that many people want to appeal, but that's certainly their right, um, and, and always is. Uh, is, there's an administrative hearing that they, that they can have and it's, um, usually it's, it's open to the public, uh, and that's, that's the appeal process that they have. Um, at the end of the day, however, if, if the ordinance is the ordinance, which is what we fall back on, um, that was, that, that's the, 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 the only way to change that process would be to, to recommend a change in the ordinance and we would have to do some study before that step would, would be taken. So I, I do think though, that it's important for, for people to know that, that they do have an appeal process.
How often are the ordinances reviewed, um, considering times do change? And I know that we, there were some good points made about water runoff and the way that the new housing developments are being developed to match what we, um, are required to do. Um, so is that, are they ever regularly reviewed? I mean, if we're, if we're citing people, are we considering that maybe we do have some that might be outdated?
There is, there, there certainly is a, a process and, and the council can request a review of, of a particular ordinance whereby then we would, we would go and, and take a look at other jurisdictions and maybe there's some requirements that are not, that are not entirely clear. Sometimes it has to do with, with fire code, for instance. A fence height might, might, or setback might also dovetail with, with, um, life and safety codes. So that is something that people don't always know, but we can explain that to them. But ordinance, um, updates can, can happen, uh, upon council request. I'm sure that, um, Attorney Nolan could weigh in here too, if he has any, anything to add about that, but that's certainly something that could be looked at.
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance is, I mean, the, the municipal code is always subject to, um, an amendment or modification depending upon changes in circumstances or changes in standards. So, um, if there's an area that the council would like us to look at for purposes of potentially making some changes, we certainly can do that.
I personally feel like the fence, because we're having some conflicts with the new construction going in, would be a good one to review. I don't know how the rest of the council feels on that with the way that times have changed and the way that the setbacks are with, um, for catching groundwater, really that's why they're slanted the way they are, I think, in the new housing developments. I don't know if it has to be like, how we go forward with that. Does it have to be a motion?
Yeah, I mean, the way that the code reads right now essentially is, is that it's, uh, you know, there's a measurement that's made, um, and you can have a, a fence that's, I think, seven foot one or seven feet or, off the top of my head. So it's not really discretionary for staff, so that's, so the, you know, someone calls us, you know, I don't know these two particularly, but my guess is, is that we received a complaint because the vast majority of our code enforcement things are, uh, reactive. And so, you know, we just go out and we measure the fence based upon what the code language is and if there's a violation, then we give them a notice. The notice that we give them initially is not a fine, uh, it's a, it's a violation notice, it's a, it's a door hanger. Um, so, you know, it, you know, the intention of that is not to give, I mean, the purpose of that is to create, uh, compliance, but if it's a complicated issue, there's, uh, contact information on that door hanger, right? And so it would probably be almost impossible to notate every portion of the code on that door hanger when the ultimate goal is for us to just make contact, let them know that there's a violation and then they contact us and if they have additional questions. If there is, um, you know, the goal of code enforcement and, you know, from my perspective and from the department's perspective is like, we don't ever want to issue a monetary fine, right? It's honor, we just want, uh, voluntary compliance. Um, you know, we've had this discussion previously that code enforcement is not, uh, you know, the most fun thing that we do, but it's a necessary thing, especially in a community that I think prides itself in, um, cleanliness and, um, you know, its, its overall image. Uh, if there's a desire to look at increasing, you know, fence heights or any of those things, it probably just has to be uniform though, because it's difficult to, you know, staff can't go out and say, well, this house deserves ten feet and this house deserves six feet or something like that. So, um, you know, we'll follow up with those two particular ones, so I don't, we don't know, I don't know the background on them or about how, uh, what we're talking about. But, um, I, I mean, I get it, I mean, the difficult part is, is that, um, every new development's a little bit different be- because of how the grading sits, uh, before they, before they get started. Um, and so that's, that is a, you know, a challenge. And so these, you know, gentleman tonight was referencing a, you know, one fence, you know, he mentioned that it was seven feet, uh, in the yard, but then if you're standing, you know, maybe in the alleyway or somewhere else, that it's then higher. And so we're just, we're not measuring it from one spot or the other, we're just measuring it from where the, where the fence starts. But, um, as, as, uh, Mike mentioned, there's, if there's a desire for us to look at particular areas of the code, we're, staff is more than happy to do that.
I, I will say also that I'm not, I'm not familiar with the concept of objective privacy and it's something that I maybe need to educate myself on, but I, I do know that fences, if you live in other parts of the country, fences are a cultural practice in California. Whether, whether we know, whether we like to know that or not, it, they're not, they're, they are not required by, by code or by law. So, although we love them, uh, apparently, and, uh, you know, the trend seems to be to build them higher and not lower, uh, that's, uh, that is, that, that is, that is the case. And I know that when I worked in Clovis, we had many, many calls about fences. Seems to be an on, uh, often, often, uh, uh, touched upon subject with, with property owners. And we often get involved with, with, uh, disagreements over, uh, over fences between two, two property owners and often it's, it's a civil issue, we can't, you know, we can't require that somebody rebuild a fence or that kind of thing. So there's, there's, there's that to be considered anyway.
Any other council discussion? Go ahead.
I just had a question about the number of family, single-family homes from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. So twenty twenty was only fifty-seven?
That's according to our records. Uh, sometimes that has to do with, with numbers in the pipeline, so...
Yeah, those are, those are homes that were finalled.
Right.
So there, there might be more that are being built or that-
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
Finalled that-
Yeah, that, that must have been like a lot of the, the hash homes, I'm thinking.
So a lot of the hash homes wouldn't count in this because, um-
Tulare.
That's in Tulare County and we don't do the permitting for it, right? So we, we do a lot of the back checking, that, that's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Uh, those, those particular homes would not count in our, um, in our system because ultimately we're not providing the, the finals on those. So, you know, in twenty twenty, you're probably, um, so probably mostly, uh, mostly West are-
Yeah.
I think that Fresno County houses in the hash development have not, in Summerlin haven't been completed.
Or there's a, just a few of them, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought it seemed like there's been a lot more, you know, that, when I looked at this, this graph, I'm like, hmm, okay. Right, thank you.
When, um, I, I guess first-
When um, I, I guess first of all, just a reminder for, for people up there listening that citizens can make requests or have concerns through the website, um, especially with code enforcement, whether it's overwatering or things like that. Um, as far as um, if I, if I'm the person who is making that request, how is the process going? And so if I make a request right now, I know it used to go into Mary, correct? And then she would distribute it out to whatever department needs to have it. So where, how's that working now?
Currently, it seems to be going to Abby, I would say. And it comes to my, in my department.
Add more to Abby, okay?
Yes, it goes, it, it, you know, filters through the website and, and then goes, goes directly to her in an email, and there's details given. Uh, and then, and then we respond accordingly.
Distributed to whatever.
Yeah, I pass it on.
Yeah, so the system is built into the website, and it depends upon uh which area of code, you know, so if you go on the website, you can see something like abandoned vehicles, right? So abandoned vehicles, we, we can assign that to anyone in the, in the city. So I think those particularly go to the police department. Because that's, you know, might go to, or might go to two people, might go to the, the building, you know, the building official and the police department. Or if it's like a tall weeds fire hazard, you know, that goes to the fire department. So that, that's also a little bit of the trickier part about code enforcement is there's no one singular person that's going to do it because it depends upon kind of where it falls. So it really is sort of a, kind of a, a team effort sort of of, you know, depending upon what issues are, are out there. Um, you know, we have a part-time, uh, we call her Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Madeline. So she uh is getting some, you know, the majority of those, I think, of the, of, of the basic ones. And then if they're more, you know, if they're health and safety, like a building structure, you know, issue, that's going to be more, you know, um, building official really. So it just, it really depends.
And then is there a follow-up to make sure that that's been covered, whatever the issue is, to make sure someone actually did follow up on it?
It's, it's entered into our system. We have a bill, uh, it's into our building permit system, and there's a code enforcement tab, and then so a case is created or a, you know, it's logged in. And then uh action is taken accordingly, depending on what the, what the nature of it is.
And you know, if it's cleared out, then someone's taking care of it or not. Okay. That's all I had.
Any other council discussion?
I just think it's nice to see this right here from, to see everything and, and in PowerPoint, and that way you can see how busy that department's been and everything. So I'm glad that you're on it and you're here to help us with that. So thanks, Holly.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I mean, Holly mentioned it a little bit, but if you just look at the number of inspections alone in the last couple of years, I mean, that's really um kind of, we kind of have this conversation, you know, obviously the permit number totals are up too, but, you know, we kind of have this conversation a lot with the, whether it be police or fire, and we talk about calls for service. And so, you know, this is kind of a similar, you know, calls for service where from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand, you know, twenty-one, um, almost doubled. So it's a significant amount of activity that's occurring. And some of those are, you know, multiple, right? Like uh, T-Mobile has lots of inspections.
Yeah, it will be interesting to see how, how the, the first quarter and then second quarter as T-Mobile finishes and drops off, you know, where, if, if it goes back down to, you know, more like eighteen hundred or if it, if it stays high. Um, so we have, and we have uh a number of single-family residences that are, you know, in, in subdivisions. But a lot of those are, you know, they're, they're, they're becoming finalled now, and so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Thank you for the report. It looks really good. And I wanted to specifically point out that I really like the current projects pending final building permit approval on this list. It's really nice to see some of those things that I didn't even know were happening. So it's, it's nice to remind us of like, okay, what's in the works, what's going on? And as you mentioned, some of them will drop off and more will be added.
Right.
But it's nice to kind of see that that movement is still happening, considering some projects we forget about quite literally.
Well, and, and, you know, this was, this was, serves as a good reminder for everybody. I mean, we've, we'd had to tweak the, tweak the format of the, of the spreadsheet a little bit because we tend to refer to them in different ways, you know. I'm, Jolene calls them by, by the name of the people involved. I call them by the address and, you know, so we had to kind of get together and make sure that we, we communicated clearly about what, you know, what was going on. Uh, and, and yes, it's a living document. So, thank you for that too. And we should thank, uh, give a little shout out too to the intern who did the graphs. And Keith uh is our, our current intern. He did a good job. So.
Thank you, Keith. Item six point two, housing allocations, second round, staff report and presentation by Community Development Director Holly Owen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary North, the City Council. Um, Holly Owen, uh, Community Development Director. Uh, in, I wanted to mention too, as you say, if you think of it as a second round, that might be, you might say, well, what happened to the first round? But uh, this is, this is the way that this ordinance is written. Um, and uh attached in, in your packet is, is the consideration of the growth management action to open the building permit allocation process. And just to review, for some of you who may not have been at the workshop on January thirteenth, this is a competitive process, uh, and it's an optional process by council directing staff to open up if, if they request uh the process of reviewing uh ranking and rating applications for housing units in the city. Uh, the ordinance is pretty specific as to the time of the year, uh, this rating and ranking process. The process is initiated in September of every year, and if no applications are received, uh, the council at its first meeting in February, if they wish, uh, can open up allocations for the rating and ranking process to begin. It's fairly detailed and outlined in our growth management ordinance, um, the, the process, the, the ranking, uh, the criteria. Um, and uh, it's uh, also again, the council, it's not a requirement for them, for you to open it up at this time. Uh, you could choose to wait till September to open up allocations. Um, after the January thirteenth workshop, uh, council did receive several recommendations to change the ordinance, and work is underway to draft those changes. Uh, the original calendar-based action, which is, is requested uh tonight, uh, to initiate that allocation process, still remains and was not recommended for change. So you have in front of you uh some information about uh the process, uh, and uh we would await your direction on this. That concludes my presentation on this.
Thank you. So just to kind of clarify, the first round, we had no um applications for single or multifamily um allocations. And so because of that, then we have the opportunity to decide if we want to open it up mid-cycle for a second round.
A second cycle, yes.
Okay.
If you don't, if you don't allocate all of the allocations, then you have that opportunity.
Did we allocate any? Okay. So council discussion? We had a good discussion, I think, at the, our last meeting over this with the planning commission. I'm okay with opening it up for the second round.
How many per year do we allow to allocate?
Uh, there's eighty single-family and thirty-five multifamily.
And um, I have a question if, if in one year, the allocation's only fifty, it rolls over?
Yeah, there's a, there's a three-year rolling. Um, and so the last time that we actually issued any single-family allocations was in two thousand and eighteen. Um, but that, that's included in the, in the spreadsheet in here. Um, but uh, but you're correct that um, they roll over for three years, as it is right now. So that was one of the conversations that was at the, that we discussed at the workshop too, is uh, do we maintain that rolling or, or, or not maintain that? But that's the current.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's not, you know. I think we should uh not roll over. But, you know, that's how I feel about it. I wasn't able to attend that, you know, because with family issues that had going on with my mother-in-law, but I would definitely would have spoke up, you know, for that at that time.
They are going to bring back the proposed changes to us also for more discussion. So they went back, and their staff direction was to work on it. So they'll bring it back to us. So do we need to do staff direction or motion? This isn't changing anything?
I think Santa wants to speak.
Okay. It just says authorize. It doesn't have a check mark on motion or, we'll open it up to um public comment?
Sandra Statts, one three eight three seven, South Settler, West Star Construction. Thank you. Um, Holly, thank you for your graphs and the presentation. And also, uh, Dave and I had the opportunity to attend the, the joint meeting, which was well done. With that, on your uh request by year and your follow-up, we did have a submittal that was done in two thousand and twenty for our phase five recommendation. So I wanted to bring that because it's not listed on the, on the graphs. So I have copies for you. Uh, shouldn't be an impact, and we'll follow through whichever way that you need it to be followed, but we did want it to be noted that we did have a submittal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So on here, do we just need to give staff direction?
Open up the allocation for a second competitive allocation.
That's the direction we want to go, then I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Item six point three, housing element update. Um, presentation by Community Development Director Holly Owen.
Get all arranged here. Good evening, Mary North and City Council, Holly Owen, Community Development Director. Uh, we have uh here before you tonight is a discussion of and a request to approve the um initiation of a process of updating our sixth cycle housing element. Um, the, uh, this will be from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one. Uh, they are eight-year cycles. Um, our current uh housing element is, uh, will, will expire at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and housing in, in general, and a housing element in particular is an increasing focus of the California Legislature. The housing element is part of a general plan for every city. Every city has um a general plan and county with uh, is required to be updated, the housing element is, every eight years. Our current cycle, as I said, is set, is set to expire. And it's time to begin the process um of updating um this, this very important element. Uh, we had been involved in something called the multi-jurisdictional housing element back in the fifth cycle. Um, I was involved with this uh with Fresno Council of Governments. Uh, also, I represented a couple of cities, including Kingsburg, and shepherded, helped to shepherd them through that process uh in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, it worked well. We had thirteen cities that were able to share strategies, a consultant, we all worked together. We all had common uh staff reports and, and ordinance amendments that were required by this day. Um, they, we, we had received assistance in uh analyzing the data about um how, where to uh rezone, uh, if, if necessary, um, uh, properties to accommodate uh our, our RENA number, as they call it. And we've come together, um, uh, again, this last year to consider this joint effort because it was so successful last time. Uh, and to also incorporate recent elements, including tasks specific to each city. So there's a general, the way we did it last, last time was that there was a big overarching document, and then there were separate chapters for each city. And there were thirteen chapters. I mean, it was, it was a, a pretty significant uh, uh, group effort. Uh, so why should we work together? Uh, as we work with a consultant, they have their conversations and direction from Housing and Community Development. That's the agency that oversees the housing element. They, at the end of the day, they review and certify everybody's housing element. And when you have that, then you have the ability uh to uh apply for funding and grants uh that uh you will not have if you don't have a, a certified housing element. Uh, the good part about that too, when you work with a consultant, is you don't make assumptions as individual staff that it turns out to be expensive in terms of time and money. And it ensures uh consistent and uh vetted approaches uh to how you're going to accommodate um some of this housing. Just so you understand though, it is um not a requirement to build housing. It's a, it's a requirement to remove obstacles to construct that housing. Uh, and that, that's done through zoning and policy, and it's done at a couple of, of different income levels. Um, some of it's market rate, some of it's um, you know, low or medium uh low housing. And then uh you, it, it, one can call it a big mapping exercise, but it's a very important one because it really does allow for the market to uh provide that housing should uh, should uh, you know, the, the financial package come together and uh, you know, a developer or, or an agency wants to move forward with it. So at the end of the day, um, it helps to share ideas and templates for staff uh reports, ordinance amendments. Uh, last time we did the housing element, uh, we realized we were a little deficient in some of the state-regulated mandated ordinance uh changes that we needed to make. So we talked uh just a couple of minutes ago about ordinance updates, and, you know, it is a living document, and you need to keep it fresh, and you need to keep it current and legal. And uh, so changes do come that are required from the state, and those need to be incorporated in, in your ordinance um to meet, to meet that requirement. Um, it will save us um a lot of money too. I mean, to hire our own consultant to guide us through this process is, is extremely expensive. It's, it's quite uh time-consuming for staff too. So it will, at the end, end of the day, create a document that's useful, that fits our community, and is also legally defensible. So the next steps that we have, working with Fresno Council of Governments and hopefully working uh again with this multi-jurisdictional approach, with a number of cities that have expressed interest in going forward. Uh, we will, um, we will look at an RFP for a consultant uh to guide us through this process as, as a region. And we're talking mostly about the small cities in the Central Valley. Um, Fresno County is also involved. Uh, City of Fresno is not, not sure. Uh, City of Clovis is not sure. But for the rest of our, our, our smaller jurisdictions, uh, we really get economies of scale, I think, by working together like this. Um, and at this point, uh, we will follow closely the next steps to take and ensure that we begin the tasks uh to keep on schedule. Uh, it's really easy to underestimate the amount of time it takes to do the community outreach that's required in this process, to do the data analysis that's where you look at, you know, you look at your entire city and say, well, where are the vacant sites? And what's, what, what makes sense for a, for rezoning? What, where, where does the city want to see uh greater density or, or multifamily? So it really is a, it's a, it's a planning exercise and a mapping exercise. Again, to remind you though, this is not a mandate to build housing. That all really has to be done uh by the private sector or by, by agencies. It just removes the obstacles to, that, that might exist currently uh when it comes to zoning or policy. Um, there are a number of jurisdictions on the same cycle that we are. So in the state, uh, you know, we're on the sixth cycle, and we're just starting our process. If you look online, all over the state, you could see people are trying to figure out how to staff and, and uh city councils and, and uh counties are trying to figure out how they're going to go through this process together. So there's some really, you know, there's, there's good um best practices out there. Uh, I've already seen a little bit of that, um, some that I follow just because I know the planners and the quality of their work. So, you know, we can, we can learn, all, all collectively learn as we go. Uh, and we'll keep the community updated um as to this process as we go through it. I think it might be a good idea to have something on our website just to, to tell the community about this process. Why are we doing it? Why is it required? What's in it for us? Uh, and, and how we can continue that community conversation. With that, uh, it's a, it's not, it's not a topic that interests everybody, but it's a really important step that we all take, uh, especially when it comes to continuing to uh, to receive uh the opportunity to apply for grants and, and other. Uh, especially when it comes to, um, continuing to, uh, to receive, uh, the opportunity to apply for grants and, and other, uh, funding streams. You need a certified housing element for that. Um, so that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions you might have.
I have a little good news for you. Um, at our COG meeting on Thursday, they were saying now that it's looking like it'll probably drop down to a hundred and eight thousand.
Oh, good.
I mean.
Yeah.
Money's money, right? A hundred and eight thousand. And obviously the more the cities that come together to look for, um, a planner to work with us will be, it could drop down even more. So that's good. So, um, and then COG's gonna look for additional funding for us and that should help as well. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Very good, thank you.
Fingers crossed we can get some additional funds to help us.
That's if we choose to participate.
I'm sorry, what?
That's if we choose to participate.
Right.
In this, uh. MJHE.
Yeah, but to hire a consultant, if we all kind of work together, it helps with the pricing too.
It's, yeah, it was, it was a learning experience the first time.
Yeah.
That I went through it and, and I really, really appreciated, uh, the, the knowledge and the context they had also at Housing and Community Development. So when we have a question about whether or not we're going down the right path, you know, eh, with a policy proposal, let's say. You know, they have, they have that conversation going with, with the, the agency that will, that will be, at the end of the day, be looking, reviewing and approving our, our document and everybody else's.
Good partnership.
Any more council discussion or questions for Holly?
Does this housing element help Kingsburg keep local control at all?
Well, I think, I think that choosing, uh, where you, you wish to grow or to, to create opportunities for housing is, is, is a local conversation. And it is, it is, uh, it is built in as a local conversation. There are community, uh, meetings that are required as part of this process. Uh, and we get to decide, uh, what, what change would, will look like at least for this interim. Again, it is, uh, you know, it's not, it's not a requirement to build this housing, but it is a path that we would take to, to allow for that housing to, to be built should, uh, should that be, you know, funded by developers or by an agency or, you know, other entities.
Yeah, so I guess my question, by entering into the MJHE, it doesn't, um, hinder us if we, you know, any kind of local control, you know, what we want for our own land and land use, right? Okay, great.
It actually helps us because we're part of the process in deciding. And I think that long-term, one of the things that we didn't have, like in our North Kingsburg plan, is, um, really discussing where we would have like multifamily housing. And I know that whenever that goes in, it's a hot topic here and so to maybe have a plan and have those community meetings. Um, to have the community have a voice in it might help some of the issues we've had in the past. Which would be local.
Right. I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure this MJHE is new, newer term to me, so.
That's all right. It was, it was a new concept, eh, back in twenty-fifteen, we, it was, it was, uh, they had never done anything like this before, get together as a group. And it was a really innovative, uh, idea from, from Fresno Council of Governments. They funded, uh, that effort and, and they, you know, we made something that was, that was very useful to some small cities that had never had a certified housing element and it was, it, it allowed them to apply for grants and, and other, uh, other funding sources that they, they wouldn't have had, so.
So we have two options here, the first one would be, um, a motion to, um, to participate in the MJHE process and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement to participate. Or the alternative would be that we could choose not to participate and we would have to, um, hire our own consultant, so, um.
I'd make a motion to approve Kingsburg's participation in the MJHE process and authorize the manager to enter into an agreement to participate, participate in the process.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you and thank you for your support.
Thank you for all your work tonight.
We'll keep you, we'll, we'll definitely keep you, um, in, in, in close communication with this process as we go forward.
Thank you.
Item seven, council reports and staff communication, seven point one, Community Services Commission. Um, we met on the twenty-sixth and, um, the agenda items included, um, that letting them know that we had approved the Prop sixty-eight per capita grant used to be for the asphalt, um, bathrooms, they were excited about that. They were waiting on the contract to be signed. Um, did it get signed?
Uh, I just signed the documents yesterday.
Thank you. Um. We also had a dog park discussion, it was the first time we had met since we had got, um, the Prop sixty-eight grant for the dog park. They were very excited about that process and being part of it. Item seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
We meet first week of March.
Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce. I think we got an update the last time. Seven point four, Economic Development. We have not met. Seven point five, Finance Committee. We met, um, last Tuesday. And the main item on the agenda was, um, twenty-one, twenty-two mid-year revenue and expenditure budget amendments. Um, which will be moving on to council next meeting. Seven point six, Planning Commission, um, we have not met since we had the joint workshop a couple of weeks ago. Seven point seven, SKGSA.
We have not met, we should be meeting within the next couple of weeks, in February.
Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
So the Kingsburg Downtown Business Improvement District met this morning here in council chambers at eight AM, so, uh, focus of their discussion this, I'm sorry, their meeting this morning was, um, receiving some applications for their photography needs for their website. And so six businesses did forward proposals and apply. However, after a lot of conversation, which was really good because they got to have a lot of good feedback with the people who were businesses who were here in person. Some, one local, one from Fresno, and kind of understand more of what they're really wanting to spend their money on, invest their, their budget into. And came up with a new set of guidelines for the photography for the website. Basically what that means is the last time they just said we need a photographer for our website and this time they're being more specific about how many businesses they need, how many photos per business. It's just a lot of technical stuff, but we're gonna have a special meeting probably in the next two weeks, the seventeenth. This Friday?
Yeah.
This week?
And then, and then in.
They changed it.
Well, and then in two weeks, they're, um.
So we're having two more this month. Oh, wow, so we have some upcoming, the next council meeting will have some more report back for you. Um, but it was overall a really great meeting with that focus, also, um, just to kind of see what they're looking towards for where they want to spend their money and their budget, that is limited. Um, and since we all know it is a new Business Improvement District, they're doing very well navigating the, um, what they're wanting to do. And, um, that concludes my report, just really thankful for their dedicated leadership on this because it's a lot to start from, from scratch. So it's good, I will have another report from you at our next meeting.
Seven point nine, Council of Governments.
Well, I've got some good news and bad news, so what should we do?
Bad first.
Huh, bad, okay.
Bad first.
Let's talk about State Route ninety-nine. So State Route ninety-nine, Selma to Fowler Rehab Project is moving along with crews working on the northbound side of Highway ninety-nine between Manning Avenue and a half mile north of Merced Street in Fowler. Last month, crews were successful in switching traffic onto the highway median, a northbound State Route ninety-nine between Selma and Fowler. I don't know how successful that was, but when they changed that route, I know we've had a lot of accidents that way. To ensure the safety of our construction workers and the public, northbound Manning Avenue on off ramps were closed to the traveling public. The ramps will be closed for four months. In April twenty-twenty-two, Caltrans will reopen northbound Manning Avenue ramps and then will close Merced Street off ramps in Fowler. So just a heads up if anyone does travel that way, so I wanted to give everybody that. Huh?
Can you say how, on Merced Street?
Yes, so Merced Street will be closed and then, um, so right now you're looking at April for, um, Manning to open both sides, so.
Please tell me they're not working at, on Golden State at the same time.
No, that's a whole different project, they're not doing anything in Golden State, so.
If you knew.
Want to avoid that area, I would recommend taking Golden State.
That will be once that is complete, completed?
Yes, so, all right, the bad news and then the good news is, um.
See?
See, gotta do the bad and then we'll take the good. Um, I mentioned to you, I had asked, um, Moses from Fresno County Rural Transit Authority, um, for some electric charging stations. And the first one has arrived, so that is here and we'll be picking that up. And, um, I spoke with Alex when it came in and we're looking for grants to put them in. And part of that, we'll be having more discussions with our EDC and bid about where we're gonna put them throughout town. You know, we do have a downtown parking plan and we'll look at putting them in as part of that as well, but at least the good news is we ordered those back in July or August and the first one's here, but we also, um, I talked to Moses about ordering more. Cause the idea was to put it over at the dog park, but because we just got the ground and that's not ready, um, I asked him for some more so that way we could put them in the downtown area. So be on the lookout for our new charging stations, should be coming soon. So excited.
Exciting.
Yeah.
May I ask?
Yeah.
Are you possibly thinking that those charging stations be sponsored?
Oh, always.
Well, just thinking.
West Star.
With T-Mobile, with other businesses or things that have advertising, when, and if you're doing it downtown, I mean, I don't know what the cost, I mean, I know what the cost is to put one in. So, but I don't know how the cost is being funded, let's put it that way.
It's the hookup part of it, yeah.
Great idea.
And where the close proximity and the simplest or easiest way to connect to those.
Mm-hmm.
If you might have infrastructure you can tie into right away.
We do, but we also, you know, the, the hookup part of it, I mean, to buy the unit itself is very expensive, so that part was paid for by FCRTA, so that part's good. But then the next part, I know you can do it, it's a tier-two, correct, Alex, if I remember? So it can, can be hooked up to a power pole, but still, there's still.
Oh, yeah.
Money, it's still cost to hook it up and everything, so.
That's a good idea.
You know, you might catch somebody.
Yeah. I like it. I like it, all right. Good idea, thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, not from COG, no.
Okay. Um, seven point ten, Council Member Reports.
I enjoyed going to the chamber dinner.
Oh, yeah, that was fun.
It was a good time, we got to sit with Supervisor Betty Mendez. Um, it was really nice to see him as well and overall it was a really nice ticket to honor the awardees. But, yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, the food was good.
Have any?
No, I don't, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry I missed all the fun. I missed out.
I was, I was supposed to relate it, it was a very nice dinner. I was in Florida, so it's.
And congratulations to all the winners.
I do have one thing, I was gonna mention the chamber dinner too, it was such a nice evening. Um, on January twenty-fourth, um, I had a meeting with T-Mobile and, um, they reached out to me, um, not only because of the position in the city, but also my day job. Um, and wanted to really talk about the lack of childcare in Kingsburg. And that there are waiting lists pretty much, um, everywhere. And they are trying to recruit so many staff members there, just looking at partnerships and investing in some of our existing, um, childcare facilities. Um, to see what they could do to help, um, not have such a lengthy list and that they could, um, help us in Kingsburg with that situation. So, and they were supposed to contact me back with some possible dates to meet with, um, our, so about four or five of our local, um, daycare preschool facilities to facilitate that conversation, so I expect that probably will be in the next month. Um, one of the other things that they said is typically when they open up their application process in a period of about five days, and I shared this at the chamber dinner also, they usually have about forty to sixty applications and they, um, from the Kingsburg one, when they opened it up, they had between five and six hundred applications. So now like the vetting is really beginning and that was, um, that was on the twenty-fourth, so I don't have any idea what the numbers are like. So at least, um, they're getting the applications in, so.
I've mentioned at COG, so all the mayors from all the other cities have asked for the links and I've sent it to them because, believe it or not, other cities have been asking about it, like, and people who want to be employees here, so residents have talked to their bears as well, so they've been sending it out. So that's good, cause we knew it was gonna be within a thirty-mile radius. So I think it's exciting that the buzz is out there and that they've got some great press, I know last week they had the article in the B as well, so it's been good for them, the press as well.
It's really nice to hear that they want to help in any way that they can to partner for childcare, cause that is a really huge.
Well, they're gonna need it with that many employees, they're gonna need childcare.
One of the things that they said is they offer a two hundred dollar stipend per month for childcare, but that hasn't been revisited in ten years and it's only one per family, not per child. And so they were really looking at the cost of childcare in Kingsburg to bring that back to maybe, um, revise, change that, update that. Um, but they wanted to have conversations to see if they could partner with local facilities, um, and if not, look at creating an additional one, so.
It's a nice perk, for sure.
Seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
A couple items, uh, first one, uh, just wanted to bring the council's attention that we were notified by the Government Finance Officers Association that, uh, we will be receiving the distinguished budget award for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it's the seventh year, uh, in a row, uh, that we've received the award and it's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting that can be received, so.
Congratulations.
There's a lot of pride in that and, uh, to be a useful document and there's, uh, obviously Alma is a, a very large part of that, but, uh, there's, there's a lot of people that help. You know, it's a two hundred and eighty-page document, so a lot of people that, uh, department heads and everyone else that helped put that together, so. We're glad to, to get that again and, um, uh, the other one, just a reminder that the Blossom Trail, uh, grand opening is, uh, Friday at ten AM in Fowler.
I'm so glad you reminded us, thank you.
That's all I have.
Oh, it's at ten, okay. In Fowler?
Yeah.
Item eight, any, um, there's listed none under future agenda items. Item nine, the Kingsburg City Council is going to adjourn out of regular calendar into closed session, thank you.
Sorry.
It's four? Oh. Thank you. For nine point one, we're going to conference with real property negotiators, California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight, thank you.